Okay, we're good to go.
Okay, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 23 River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance and flag to the flag of states of America.
States of America. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Christie, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Okay, next round approval of minutes from the February 9th workshop and regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the workshop and meeting minutes as indicated in the agenda.
And let's throw in, we can throw in the February 9th closed, closed meeting minutes, sorry about that.
As well as the closed meeting minutes, thank you.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on those? Christie, we have first and a second on the meeting minutes from February 9th, the workshop and the regular meeting minutes and the February 9th closed session minutes.
The first by Watson, second by Beerstead will start the voting with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Morissette. Tony.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next round approval of the bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move approval for the bills in the amount of $7,685,699 and zero cents, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Second.
Okay, first and a second, any questions about the bills? Christie, we have first and a second on approval of the bills.
First by Downing, a second by Beerstead will start the vote with Ms. Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Christie. Next move on to public comments. John, do we have anybody at the, at City Hall that you're aware of?
Uh, no, but we do have someone online, we have Matt Johnson, which I am bringing in right now, and he is here, and Matt, you are unmuted. Is there, sir?
I'm here.
Excellent.
We, we can hear you, Matt.
We just lost the screen. Um, I don't know if I have to speak now or once you start talking about the zoning for the breweries and wineries and distilleries.
Well, if you want to talk now, go ahead, and if you're going to be around, if anybody has any questions, if you have any questions.
Yeah, so the one concern that Stephanie and I have, and I talked with Amy Peterson earlier today, is the, is the, uh, micro nano brewery, which we spoke of last week. Um, just, there's no number associated with that, and it's concerning to us still. I know I've been trying to, tried to been calmed by Amy and a few other people, that we're a brewery, not a micro or nano brewery. I mean, we're classified as a brewery, but yet we're a small batch brewery. But on the, on your table A, a brewery cannot be in the B1 district that we're in. And I know you're not trying to hurt us by any means, but just to, if somebody in the future says, hey, they're a brewery, what are they doing in B1? You know, that's, that's all, that's what our big concern is. There's no number of production with a nano or micro, and I don't know what the limitations are.
Okay, we'll, we'll have Amy address that when we get to that on the agenda, okay, Matt?
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
John, do we have anybody else?
Uh, there is no one else here in, uh, the council chambers.
Okay, so, thank you, sir.
I, I do have a comment, Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
I forgot, and I should have done this last meeting, but I just wanted to publicly thank the fire department, uh, a few weeks ago, because the, the home next door to the home that exploded was my daughter's, and they kept it from burning down, so I very much appreciate it.
That's good. Anybody else have anything? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Uh, first acknowledgement of the following minutes, Police and Fire Commission from 12/9 of 20, uh, Library Board from 1/4/21, the Plant Commission from 1/5 of 21, uh, River Falls Housing Authority from 1/13/21, uh, the West Central Biosalads, Wisconsin Biosalads Facility Commission Special Meeting of 1/1121, and the Bid Board from 2/1/21. Next thing is a resolution awarding ARC GIS migration consulting contract to MSA. Uh, next one is a resolution approving the sale of, um, surplus city vehicle, which would be the 1989 Ford 1250, uh, GPM, uh, pumper, that we retired from the police, or from the fire department. Next one is a resolution approving the 2021 legislative priorities, and the last one is a resolution approving Representatives to Sterling Pond's Corporate Park Architectural Review Committee. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Item Number Three.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion on the, oh, yep, go ahead, Diane.
No, I was going to make a motion, yep. Uh, I move we approve Consent Agenda Items 2A through F and 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
Okay, I have first and a second, uh, any questions or comments on those? Christie, we have first and a second on, uh, agenda items, Consent Agenda 2A through F, uh, 4, 5, and 6.
First by Odine, second by Morissette, we'll start the vote with Mr. Gagne.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Morissette. Downing.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mr. Downing, you pulled number three.
Resolution awarding ARC GIS migration consulting contract to MSA. Um, and my question is very specific and directed to our tech staff, so, uh, Mr. Simpson, do we have a tech staff I can, I can ask this to? So, my question is, um, and it has to do with, um, how this would be stored, this particular, uh, program, and there was a study done by Verizon, and the, the only concern I have with this, I'm in favor of it, but there's a potential for misconfiguration errors. So my question is, does our cloud platform have a seamless backup and sync system? And that's the million dollar question I have.
Yeah, I mean, the cloud, our IT staff, um, I can't answer that question specifically for the design that we haven't completed yet for the cloud system with this GIS, but, um, I know specifically and gen, and I guess generally, we do have kind of a multiple backup system for our different data, um, depositories. I don't think I can answer that question for you now, because we'd still, we'd be going through the process with MSA of converting what is now, you know, kind of a solely a server-based platform onto a cloud. So I don't believe I can answer that question for you tonight, but I can certainly get back to you about, um, how that will be backed up.
Okay, and, and for me, I, you know, I know there's more pros than cons when it comes to working out the cloud, they are more secure in many ways, and they're safe from, you know, tampering and other things, such as weather, so all sorts of stuff. But the one thing that, that just, you know, every time I reached it and researched it and looked into it, it's misconfiguration, and that's why having a seamless backup system is important. So I take it that we will have one at some point, correct? If we don't.
Yeah, I mean, a backup system is part of it, but we don't have, right now, we're not sure what the particular cloud format's going to be, that, that, the consulting project is essentially to determine what the, kind of the organization and architecture is going to be of a cloud-based GIS system. We, we know, you know, we know the brand of GIS that we use, um, but there's going to be options that we would consider, um, and it won't be, you know, just the engineering and planning staff that'll determine what we, we ultimately choose, our IT staff will be involved in those discussions and determinations.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I make a motion to approve the resolution awarding ARC GIS migration consulting contract to MSA.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Christie, we have first and a second on Consent Agenda Item Number Three.
First by Downing, a second by Watson, we'll start the vote with Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Gagne. Odine.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
This is John, I missed, uh, someone that had signed up for the public comment.
Okay.
Uh, Duke Welter, uh, do, do you mind if we bring him in now?
No, no problem, have him come in.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Nope, you're fine, thanks, John.
Yep. All right, he's coming in now, and he's there.
Thank you, John.
Yep, you're there.
Great, thank you, and, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thanks for this opportunity, and I hate to be in your agenda at another point, but, uh, I had a, I just wanted to bring you up to date on, uh, one development with, uh, any corridor collaborative, and to talk with you for just a moment about the addition of the Paul Falls Dam tier legislative priority list and your resolution. Uh, so, uh, I want to, you, you've been busy with a lot of decisions related to the dam and, and, uh, some somewhat changes of direction, uh, that are going to speed things up or make things, uh, a little more straightforward, I hope, about, uh, the fundraising and the process itself. Uh, so thanks for your work over the last month or two on that. If we, uh, with, with the resolution that you're considering tonight, the legislative, uh, priorities resolution, uh, oh, and I, and I should again rep, uh, introduce myself, just for those of you who've forgotten me. Uh, I'm, I'm Duke Welter, I'm Vice Chair of the Kenny Corridor Collaborative, and I'm Chair of the Fundraising Committee, which has been working diligently behind the scenes. Uh, but, uh, the, the legislative priority that you're, uh, poised to include in your, in your list tonight, uh, is an important one, because it gives us the opportunity to talk with legislators, uh, and, and the city, and, uh, and hopefully make some progress in this upcoming budget cycle. Uh, I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to do some things, uh, through that process, uh, and, uh, so I really appreciate your consideration of that and your, your inclusion of that. And the, the second thing that I'd like to mention to you is that if you haven't seen them, we have done five videos with people from, uh, Merrill, Baraboo, and, uh, Colfax, uh, about dam removals in those communities, uh, including the mayor of Baraboo and, uh, uh, the head of the Kiwanis Club, uh, and, and others, to talk about what the process of dam removal was in their communities, and how it's had an effect on the communities, and how they're, they're changing as a result of the new, those new green spaces in their communities, how the businesses are turning that way, and, and, uh, and people are using the, uh, the areas that used to be, uh, impoundments. So those are being rolled out now a couple a week on the KCC Facebook page, uh, and in, uh, the second week in March, we'll have a, a, a community meeting, or a Zoom meeting, where people can come on and, uh, talk with the people who we interviewed for all these, uh, videos. And I think you'll find them to be interesting and informative, and I hope you'll be able to join us, we'll, we'll get you more, more information, uh, as those things go forward, but I hope you'll have a chance to look at those Facebook videos. So that's all I have, I just wanted to thank you for your time, if anybody has any questions.
Walter.
Hey.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, there's a resolution approving request for city support for the River Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism. This is for the bureaus, to, if, for the tourism bureaus, 2021 events, and before we go any further, Russ Corpora, the Chamber, uh, Executive Director, is going to give us a little presentation. Are you with us, Russ?
He is now.
Okay.
And we will make him a presenter. Two, one. Russ, are you there?
I am.
Yep. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselor, um, it was about a year ago that we met on this before COVID, and I shared with you many exciting planets, particularly for River Falls Days, and, um, we face, uh, the same level uncertainty about this year's events as we did, um, about a month or so after we had met last year. I just wanted to share with you, uh, a couple pieces of information, uh, first, that with all three of these events, um, with maybe a few exceptions, uh, with the Bluegrass Festival, we are planning them in, in three tracks, and while that's a little frustrating for us, um, as, uh, chamber staff, um, the three tracks that we are planning is, one, as, uh, the festivals would normally be held, uh, two, a, a scaled back version of them in, so meaning in-person events, but with some, um, uh, smaller crowd limitations, um, extra COVID protection, um, protocols, and then three, uh, the worst-case scenario, uh, where we would not conduct the events at all, uh, and, and have virtual versions of those like we did in 2020. And what we will do is we will continue to work with city staff and Pierce County Public Health, um, and determine what is possible as we become, uh, get closer and closer, uh, to each, each of the events. So, um, we are proposing the usages as if the events were going to go on, um, as normal, because that is, I'm sure, all of our hope, but we recognize that, um, uh, that, that may not be possible, depending on, uh, what, uh, COVID does to us here over the next two or three months. The usage requests for both Bluegrass Fest and River Falls Days, um, and some of the smaller events like, um, the, the Parade for River Dazzle and the Halloween Trick or Treat Events are identical to what we requested last year. The significant change is with, uh, Bluegrass Festival, as you may recall, Bluegrass Festival is, um, a, basically a pub crawl, where attendees of that event go to, to private locations, bars and restaurants, to listen to the bluegrass bands, and it is typically held in mid-April. Uh, we determined that, um, it would not likely be safe to invite larger crowds of people into, um, our local bars in mid-April, and, uh, we'll be shooting for, uh, an event during Memorial Day weekend. Also to minimize COVID spread, um, with the hope that vaccines will allow us to at least have performances in small groups of 50 to 100 people, uh, we, uh, are proposing some outdoor stages for this one year, and would hope that in 2022, then we could go back to normal operation. And that is the reason we are requesting use of, um, the same, basically the same area that we use for River Falls Days and, and Bacon Bash. Um, the other reason we went to Memorial Day weekend was, uh, obviously that, that extra six weeks may give us some opportunity to do this event as more and more vaccines get out, but it certainly buys us, um, uh, warmer weather where we could conceive having, um, some stages outside. Bluegrass Fest, uh, if any of you have attended, is much smaller, um, much smaller, uh, crowds than the other two festivals, and we would be looking at, um, you know, um, crowds of probably in that 100 to 200 range. You have to remember that our largest venue for the Bluegrass Fest, when it's held in local venues, or bars and restaurants, is the banquet room at Junior's Restaurant. So these bands don't attract the same kind of crowds as particularly the River Falls Days bands, uh, do. So, um, the infrastructure's there, it's fairly easy for us to put together a small festival venue, we would utilize some of those outdoor stages and, uh, the outdoor patios of those restaurants and bars that would want to, um, participate in a way to avoid not doing this event for a second year in a row. So those, that's the, the biggest change to our requests from previous years, and, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sorry, first I'll take a motion on this, and then we'll have discussion on it, and we can ask Russ any questions we might have.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the resolution, uh, for River Falls Area Chamber, uh, Tourism Bureau, request for city assistance for special events for 2021.
Second.
Okay, so, questions, questions for, yes, uh, John had his hand up.
Uh, so Russ, I think it's great that you're looking at doing things outdoor, and I know, um, there's been some difficulties, and with the dates we've had before because of the weather, snow tends to not be good for the event, so I think, in a strange way, um, this actually is helping, uh, the event itself by having it later, and, um, you know, I, I actually think it's good that, uh, it helps to have that moved. So it's, I think it's moving in the right direction, and I don't know, you know, there's no way of knowing exact what date, but I think, no matter what, it's going to help the, the event as a whole, so, I don't know, how did you get to that date, and, you know, is that, are, are you guys still looking at, um, improving that, or is that a, is that a solid date you have?
Um, uh, thank you for the question, the, uh, Bluegrass Fest was specifically designed using, uh, and using some seed money from room tax dollars, and the idea is to generate people spending, um, the night, or at least one or two nights. Um, and to do that, we wanted to fill in some weekends that are traditionally a low occupancy in the hotels, and then by mid-May, when we start getting into, uh, college and high school graduation season, um, pre-COVID, our hotels were fairly full during that time of the year, so April was specifically picked because of low occupancy. Um, and, uh, but I would agree with you that having the three days of Memorial Day, um, may prove to be a, a more popular event weekend, that, uh, we would still get a nice handful of Oregon stays, but also gener- generate more day trippers than, than mid-April, and we're, um, battling late spring, um, snowstorms in Easter. So, uh, we, we will have to see, uh, how that goes, but, uh, as we, as we conceive future events, we, and it benefits the city, the chamber, and our local businesses, to get people to spend the night when they come to these things, because then that generates more lodging tax, that then allows us to make future investments in other tourism programs. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Yep, Mr. Plunkett.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Russell, I appreciate the effort that you put in on here, and, um, the planning that you've done and the attention to, uh, mitigating potential harm from the pandemic, uh, in this event. I know that people have been, uh, not at public events for a long time, and, and people want to be, um, you know, particularly, you know, we're looking at, at the nice summer weather here, hopefully, you know, that, that weekend, um, and might be able to get some real nice crowds here. A couple of factors that I am looking at is, we've got increased vaccine availability for people in high-risk groups, uh, hopefully by the time period that you're discussing, will be into, uh, the people in the group two. Uh, the people in the, in the group one, the one A, B, and C that wanted vaccinations, will all have had opportunities to and have had enough time for them to be effective. And of course, we, we don't know yet, as you, you mentioned, bringing up three potential plans here, um, what's going to happen? Um, what I really liked hearing about was the potential for doing, um, more of these events outdoors, and that's probably the biggest safety factor that we can encourage, is to have the bands outdoors, and, you know, I've been to bluegrass bands, Trampled by Turtles, that drew 5,000, 10,000 people, and often draw more. So, what can we do as a council to, from a perspective of risk reduction, to encourage more of these activities, uh, to be outdoors and not in indoor environments, um, in regards to what actions we take as a council? Thank you.
Um, well, thank you for the comment, uh, Counselor, we, um, I, I, I'll tell you why Bluegrass Fest was inside, uh, because, uh, as I mentioned, it was conceived as a way to fill in empty hotel rooms in mid-April, um, and then the weather was, was, is usually iffy. Um, I, I will also say, though, as a, as an event coordinator, um, I have been in communities where there are too many special events, and you run into volunteer burnout. Um, you, you get to see some of the same people at every festival, and one of the things that works nicely about Bluegrass Fest is that having the bands in bars and restaurants, their staff, um, becomes the event labor rather than having to recruit, recruit volunteers, so, um, that, that is one advantage. Uh, we are looking, though, at our strategic plan for, uh, for 2021, is to hopefully get some version of these three events off the ground, and we are starting to do, uh, research, um, and determining, uh, a, a launch of at least one larger event in 2022, and maybe one medium-sized event. Um, almost every event idea that we come up with, uh, with, is outdoor in nature, whether it's a, I have a tremendous amount of experience, uh, most of my, half my career, I was the director of, race director of a fairly large running marathon, um, and, uh, but any, we're looking at art trails, outdoor wine walks, um, to utilize, um, uh, the trail on the river, the beautiful Glen Park, uh, the facilities that we have, just even the Plaza and the Heritage Park, Veterans Park make nice settings for those. So I would say any new events that we have coming up, you know, there's 90% chance that those are going to be outdoors just because of, um, how popular they are. Now, when we look at, uh, uh, winter events, it is a, a time of the year when we can have, um, quiet or low occupancy, and sometimes those would create some smaller indoor events, but you can still do cross-country ski events and, and snowshoe events, and, um, there's ways to get people outside, although I have been involved in two or three winter events, and it's either too warm, and you don't have enough snow, or it's 20 below, um, so I try to stay away from them whenever I can, uh, because they can be problematic. But I could tell you, we, we work really well with your city staff, um, it was difficult not to do the events last year, um, but our first priority, uh, and we share that priority with the city staff, is, uh, we, we won't do them unless it's safe to do so.
Okay, anybody else have something? Not sure, Ben, did you have your hand up? Yep, go ahead, Ben, sorry.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Is there anything that we can do as far as the liquor licensing to allow for temporary outdoor service by the bars in tents? So that we're not dealing with the issue that was brought up regarding volunteer burnout? But that we can allow the potential of larger crowds in a safer environment?
I don't know the answer to that technically. I will say for volunteer burnout, one of the things that we're, that we successfully did at in other communities where I've been a chamber director is we need to do a better job of outreach to get more volunteers. One of the ways we did that in several communities is we partner with larger nonprofits who may not have been previously involved with the event and pay them an hourly rate to their volunteers based on their volunteer hours. And so we were at East Coast Fest and Ellsworth were able to recruit 300 volunteers and in return send out $15,000 in donations to the nonprofits for their, for, for them providing our volunteers. And it, it works by providing us our volunteer labor, but it also brings more people to the events because the members of those nonprofits and their families that want to support those events that are supporting them. So that's, that's one strategy that we're looking at.
Thanks, Russ.
Current setup, so you, you mentioned in your having event cups and things like that. I, I just don't know enough about how the beer sales are handled at these outdoor events. Is that normally then done through your volunteers and goes to charity? Or, or how does that work?
So the, we, we have volunteers that are selling the beer. Any beer sales is a, one of the primary revenue streams of any festival. But those volunteers are trained, we check IDs. And by state law and city request, we always have a licensed bartender on site at all of our alcohol locations.
So the, the potential would exist outside of the beer sales to allow some of our current licensed establishments to have sales at these event if they were to have a band that would have a larger draw than?
I, I don't know state law well enough to, to tell you that. I, I will tell you this though, that we never have any problem getting bartenders. Our, our volunteer burnout comes from finding people who are willing to stand at a crossroads for a couple of hours, empty garbage bags, all the little less glamorous activities. When we put on our volunteer halls, the bartender spots fill very quickly. And usually it's people like myself that are, end up emptying the garbage bays because they just not too much excitement for those volunteer spots.
Okay, anybody else have anything for Russ?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, so Councilmember Plunkett, it's probably an answer I want to get back to in more detail offline or at a future council meeting. But there's, there are some options for the city council related to the license premise. It wouldn't likely involve them being you know, off or not adjacent to their actual physical location. And then there's some provisions in state law that I'm aware of. There's others that I can't recall at this moment. But the chamber, the Chamber of Commerce has some special status as far as liquor sales. And then I believe there's provision about like bona fide nonprofits or things. And I'm not sure about liquor as, as opposed to beer sales. So those are things I can, if you're interested, I can get some more information and get it back to the council. But there's, there's quite a matrix in Wisconsin of who can sell what, where, when, how and why. And there's several forces that wish not to allow any changes to that because they, they control a particular corner of that. So there are, in fact, there's some, there's likely to be some more bills introduced this year about that to go containers and service off-premise and things like that. But typically the establishment or the physical location is who has to hold the license with the exception of, of these kind of community festivals and events. And I'm not exactly sure how that works for, say, if, if one of our existing establishments would be the kind of official liquor provider at a certain outdoor stage in city, city property, I'd have to get some more information on that to answer it correctly.
I, I also do know that the, the alcohol licenses that are available to nonprofits for events is restricted to beer and wine. That liquor is, is not available to us. And I would say that even if it were, we would not request that permission. Nothing good happens when people are drinking Fireball at a festival, so.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, Chris, do you have a first and a second on the resolution approving request for city support for the River Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Bureau?
First by Morset, a second by Downing. We'll start the vote with Mr. Watson.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
You're stood.
Hi.
Morset.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Old Dean.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next I'll take a motion on a resolution approving Sterling Pond's, the third edition final flat, or plat, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I, second.
Okay, first and a second, questions or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
What's the minimum required park acreage for an area such as this development? Are we meeting the minimum park requirement for this development by ordinance?
Is Amy on?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Yes, we are. So those are the park requirements for...
Can't hear you, sorry. Barely.
How about now?
Oh, it's the same, I can still hear you.
Okay, I'll talk a little louder, is that better?
It helps.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the park requirements have been met for Sterling Pond's. They were met previously and there were some adjustments made in the Sterling Pond's Park Plan, which both Park Board and Council adopted a year ago, January, taking into consideration some of the green space areas that are in the Sterling Pond's development, including trails along the stormwater areas, et cetera. So, yes.
Are we splitting the park in any way with this new development? And if so, how are we maintaining access to the park if any of those lots will be separating parkland?
I don't believe we're splitting the park. So I don't think access to, to the park is not changing, so.
All right, I just had, I saw a couple of comments from folks and I just wanted to get some clarity on parkland ordinances. But then also if we were splitting any parkland out in that area and how we're maintaining that. So you answered those questions and I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just make a comment if I could.
Oh, yep, go ahead.
When I first got on the council, I think my second year I was on the Plan Commission and we had a joint Plan Commission Park Board meeting along with residents of the Sterling Pond's neighborhood. The Sterling Pond's neighborhood is unique. There was a developer that was going to try to do a much larger plan and it didn't come through. And so the, the residents of Sterling Pond's years ago were sort of left in the lurch a little bit. The city stepped in and gathered the residents of Sterling Pond's together and actually laid out a, a workshop with the, with the residents of Sterling Pond's to talk about the amenities they wanted in the park. Now, like every other park we have in the city, I'm thinking of like Highview Meadows Park, for instance. We can't have, we'd love to put all the amenities in at one time, but as, as the lots develop and as the, as the impact fees get collected, it's at that point that we can start to add some of the amenities. But there was enough there and I think the city actually sort of, for lack of a better analogy, pre-bought some, some amenities for that park and allowed the residents to sort of decide, hey, this is where the basketball court's going to go and we're going to do volleyball court over here and we're going to do, you know, these types of things. So I, I saw the same comments that you did, Mr. Gagne. And, and I just, I just want people to know that that park was planned and continues to have impact by the residents of Sterling Pond's. And, and that's how it was laid out. So I just wanted to provide that history for the council and for others. Thank you.
I appreciate that history, Mr. Morset. There definitely is a lot of history there. And I know that that community and neighborhood gets together a few times a year. They actually do a lot of barbecues and that park is highly used. And I think I made comments on that in the past. So just wanted to make sure that we're addressing those needs and still following the plan that was in place. So thanks for the history.
Sean, I'll get you a minute, Mr. Plunkett and Mr. Watson had their hands up first. So go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I'm looking at the, the map here on five, six and seven on the revised one, how does that, we've got a berm along the highway there with some trees planted that I'm assuming, you know, were supposed to be a noise barrier. It looks like they're, you know, sort of not very functional from the condition. Who, who is responsible for that berm first? Who owns that area?
We've got an easement over that burn, so we're responsible for maintenance of it.
Okay, so it's, we're responsible for maintenance, but we don't actually own it?
I can't tell you that at the moment, I don't have the parcel map pulled up, so.
Gotcha, yeah, I don't know, that's why I'm asking. The reason I, I'm asking is as I, I look at this, we've got that, that park in Sterling Pond's. And long-term, as I look at development, I, I think that we want all of the various nodes of the city to be able to connect to each other. And as I look at our future trail system, I, I understand we can come out, you know, potentially County Road U up to, I forget what the name of that road is on the north side, Old Jersey Road? Chapman.
Chapman Drive.
No, the, the one that's closed on the north side.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that looks like a really good trail system connecting through to that neighborhood. But then County Road U is really narrow that there. Have we looked at the potential for having that trail system connect down through Arrow Court up along into Sterling Pond's Park? Was that something that we looked at or if we did, what did we say about that?
Mayor, I can take that if you like.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, yeah, so I would point to the Kenny Corridor Plan. That's the most recent plan where we took a look at some of the, the trail accesses through the city. And it does have a trail plan coming up Hoopert or County U and taking Old Jersey Road in. So that is the, the trail plan at this point for access to the Sterling Pond's neighborhood.
Okay.
We have right away, oh, I suppose we do, that's the, the city owns that hill there. So that would be then the trail would cut in along the, the hillside on the west side of U?
Potentially, it hasn't been designed yet. It's the plan on paper at this point.
Could the expansion of five, six and seven impact the potential? In case we don't do the, the County Review option of doing a trail in the future along the inside of that berm into Sterling Pond's?
Yeah, I would say with the easement there, there may be potential, but yeah, you're correct, there isn't a plan to put a trail on between what would be the, the lots on five, six and seven and, and the berm.
How far in do those lots cut in? I can't tell from the picture here, toward the road and towards our easement there.
They go all the way to the road.
Yeah, yes.
Did you, was that, did you have more, Mr. Plunkett? Or Hal, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Plunkett, if you have anything more to add. The, the fact that the, the lots extend all the way to the road did come up in Plan Commission. We didn't, we didn't get into the topic of, of a potential trail connection or a separation that, that would, that might be created between the existing parkland and the unplatted lands or the hillside on the back south and east of the, of the development. So I, I would like maybe for Amy to talk a little bit more about that. Like why were these lots extended out to the road? What's the motivation there? And, you know, are we, are, and, and what problems could we be creating? Because, you know, I think it's worth a second look here while we, while, while we have it in front of us.
Sure, so essentially what happened was when we were looking at the Sterling Pond's Park Plan, we were looking at the amount of parkland acreage as I spoke to you before. And that really made the case that there is a lot of parkland trail access, a green space in the Sterling Pond's area. So the original plat did show that there would be dedicated parkland along the west edge of those lots that would carry through to the south towards the Sterling Pond's Hill, if you will. That was decided to not be needed as parkland. It was some sporadic kind of just linear spaces and the, the trail access there staff determined wasn't needed simply because there's access through Elgin Court and Kettering and the sidewalks that are going to be planned to the south there to be able to access the hill, if that helps.
Gronn, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can comment too on a couple of other things that I wasn't privy to the, to all the Plan Commission, but obviously I've followed the minutes in that. The, there has been some tendency on these development plats where the city essentially gets the leftover land. It's a regular, it's irregular shaped. It's not easily defined as far as where the private property and the public property is. And it essentially becomes a maintenance. It, it's not, it's not a publicly beneficial... It's not a publicly beneficial property. The, the, the trail issue you raise is a good one and it, it is probably the only potential use I could see, although. It doesn't have a connection to any overall concept for trail plan. That the overall concept is up Hoopert through Jersey. And don't forget the other connection which we included in the Radio Road Interchange Plan. So we, we spent considerable time with the DOT. To make sure that at some point, when the city builds its part of the trails, um, there is a safe way across the, the highway. There was some discussion, and, and I can't put a finger on what context that discussion was, but it was probably almost 10 years ago now where they talked about some kind of underpass. You know, between Sterling Ponds and the Whitetail Corporate Park and, you know, that was pretty quickly determined to not be. That feasible. Um, well, it's, it's, you can do it, but it's not from a financial standpoint, doesn't make a lot of sense. So. We're gonna have, likely have some trail connections down. Radio Road all the way to the, kind of the west side of town. And then come back in through Powell, through Division Street, et cetera, connecting into those systems. And then you also have the connection, Radio Road, the shorter kind of route around would be Radio Road over the interchange. Um, Radio Road Interchange from Chapman or through the Corporate Park part of this neighborhood. And then down Paulson, um, which would connect you into the Whitetail Corporate Park Trail System. Um, both the paved and the, the mountain bike trails and then back into town that way. Then obviously the city's got a lot of work to do also then to try to get people from that north end of town. South into the heart of the town because we've got sections on Main Street that don't have sidewalk on both sides and there's some other things. So, just to give. Little more context of some of the, the trail discussions. I know Councilmember Watson and I have had a number of discussions about this and. I can see in my office lots of marker on the map. Um, so. The idea is to try to get connection from all the neighborhoods to all the other neighborhoods. Um, I don't know that the property in lots five, six and seven here was thoroughly vetted as kind of a. A bike or pedestrian corridor because it's not in any kind of concept connection plan. And I think staff's look at this plan was more that we were gonna kind of get leftover land. Um, that isn't gonna be that helpful. And I, I would point out there still is a drain, drain easement through those lots. So it's, there's not gonna be a lot of built environment. You know, necessarily in that land. Um. Frankly, my guess is the developer would be happy for us to keep some of that land, but um, it's not, not a great benefit. With the exception of this concept about would you have a trail somehow back through there to Arrow Court? Um, then it would run, I guess, along the frontage road somehow, um, back.
Just, just an observation, if I could. Similar to, for instance, the. Oh, there's an easement, I think, over on River Ridge that gets you down to the Kenny that kind of goes between the houses. There's an easement on Wasson that gets you into the backside of the. What I would call the middle school fields, the one row fields. If you look on the map here, uh, and I don't want to get too far afield because this is actually about the plat, but. Um, from a, from a, from an access standpoint, you've got outlet number one, outlot number one between lots 22 and 23. There's sidewalks in there. And then there's outlot number two, which is between nine and 10, which would then fit, feed into the park. So. Theoretically, you wouldn't have to go around the backside. You could get into the neighborhood and have that traffic, that foot and bike traffic going through the neighborhood. Uh, potentially through those two outlots as well, I would assume. Is that correct, Amy or Scott?
Amy, I think um, it's between 22 and 21 is the connection to Jersey, to Old Jersey Road. Um, it could be outlot one or that 21, 22, I think comes the connection to Kettering. I'm not sure. It's hard to see without a. Aerial, but yeah, you're gonna have a connection through that direction also then into the. Um, park. And recalling what um, Community Development Director Peterson mentioned. This is part of kind of the, this plan reflects the adopted Sterling Ponds Park Plan, which was just recently. Um, kind of adopted by the Park Board and the, the city. And so we've tried to use that as the guide here for what access. Points, trail connections and parkland needs are, are in the area.
Mr. Downing, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I was, I wanted to respond to a question that I think we all got in our email. Someone asked about a dog park back there. And about a year ago, I had amended um, the Sterling Ponds Plan, the Park Plan to include a small dog park, which was unanimously, unanimously supported by. Uh, the people who live back there and the, the committee. So there is a small dog park in that that we adopted as a council well back. And with that build, there is a potential, and this is for a future park committee to look at, but there is a potential for a connector piece. Um, to connect with the disc golf course, uh, that the disc golf course league is building at 18 hole one back there. Um, that was, will be looked at in the future, but the reason we're not seeing it sooner is because everything's delayed because of COVID. And that's part of the answers to the questions that we're getting is, a, a lot of this has been delayed and it doesn't mean it's not in there. So, I'd just like a chance to reiterate, reiterate that for people who might not have made it to those committees and discussions we have and. There, there certainly is going to be trails that will be developed there, but we need to let that area develop a little bit before we uh, say solidly we know what's best for it. So, thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, Diane, you had your hand up? So Dean?
Uh, no, actually, but um, as long as I've got the floor.
Sorry, yes, go ahead.
As long as I've got the floor, um, uh, I will just say it's nice to see Sterling Ponds um, filling in. When I first moved to River Falls in 92, it was still um, uh, a dairy farm. So it's uh, come a long way since then.
Okay, so does anybody have anything else on this with the, the, the third, the third plat?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want, I want to clarify on the Sterling Ponds Park Plan that there's some things that are included in the narrative. That do not have a location determined, just so people, you know, I just want to clarify. I think the dog park was one of them. Um, the disc golf course, there's a little more clarity and where that's proposed and the park proper itself, I guess, the formal park. With the playground and things, those are a little bit more determined, but um, there is some things that are included kind of in the text of the plan that haven't been determined. So. There's still, still time for that to be kind of worked through by the Park Board and that, but. So everybody doesn't think that there's an exact location for every single element of what is put in. Um, I just want to clarify that. Um, and obviously the, things have to be funded um, over time through the Capital Improvement Plan and, and Mr. Morissette or Councilmember Morissette was correct that. Essentially, we funded a lot of these improvements before the, the impact fee money was there. We did, and that was a specific decision by the council to go ahead and do that. Um, because they thought there was enough development and it had stalled. And so we essentially kind of borrowed from future impact fees to, to pay for that. So we're still essentially paying for some of that with these. These lots that are going in now and we're starting to get some equilibrium in that, which will give us a little bit momentum for, for expenditures, but. It's not likely that there'll be hundreds of thousands of dollars of park expenditures in the next two years, just solely based on this, this addition being approved.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Anybody else have anything on this? Christie, you have a first and a second on the uh, the resolution approving uh, Sterling Pond's third addition, the final, the final plat?
A first by Morissette, a second by Watson. We'll start the vote with Mr. Beersdod.
Aye.
Donnie.
Aye.
Plunkett. Odine.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Morissette. Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Uh, next is a resolution approving the general development plan for Dawes Place. I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the general development plan for Dawes Place.
Second.
Okay, we got first and second discussion. Anybody have comments or questions? Go ahead, Mr. Morissette.
Mr. Mayor, I uh, I had a conversation with Community Development Director Peterson, I think it was yesterday. And specifically, it was, it was um, with regards to, I think it's page 91, number three of our packet. Provision for municipal services. Uh, the way that reads. Makes it sound like there will be a private well and sewer system that serves the development that connects to the city. I had a lot of concerns about that and in talking with Development Director Peterson, she said. Uh, she need, she said she would probably be able to clarify some of those things tonight. She did to me, but I think it'd be good to just have her clarify. What we're actually gonna have up there. Um, having a private well and septic inside the city limits. Is not something I would be in favor of and that's not what I heard. So I don't know if, Mr. Mayor, if you'd allow.
Yep, go ahead.
Peterson to talk, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah, I think the, the word system after private water and sewer is what was throwing folks off. It really was private and water. Uh, private water and sewer laterals connected to the RFMU system mains. So. And, and we had conversations with them regarding that. Um, there's some fire hydrants that need to be located within the development. Um, that's probably going to change what the system looks like when it is submitted for the specific implementation plan. We're anticipating that what it's going to be is um, the, the public water and sewer located under private streets. So. Again, that's what we're anticipating at this point. It does not mean that there would be a private water and sewer system on location.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Gagne.
Uh, Amy, would that be uh, would our infrastructure, the city infrastructure be um, in an easement? Or a right of way underneath that private road at that point?
Correct, yes.
And then it would make sense, I mean, I know this is more just a memorandum. Um, obviously there's nothing legal in that terminology that would bind us. Um, to allow them to have their own private sewer and water. Um, would it make sense to change that or is it fair just to leave it as is? Cause there's nothing final in that wording? Or does it set a precedent?
Well, i- if you continue reading the sentence, it, it says private water and sewer system that serves the development which connects to the city's system. Again, the intent was that it was going to be private water and sewer laterals, let's say, that sort of, or that connect to the city's system. I. It was never intended to be, like I said, private well and sewer. And that will come through on the specific implementation plan. So I don't believe this would need to be changed.
And then our, our comments here are on public record, so I think that adds a good description to anybody looking forward. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on the uh, resolution approving the great, the. The general development plan for Dawes Place.
A first by Morissette, a second by Odine. We'll start the vote with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Gagne. Morissette.
Aye.
Donnie.
Aye.
Beersdod.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next move on to the administrator's report. If anybody has anything for Scott? Scott, if you have anything?
I have a question for Mr. Simpson.
Yep, go ahead.
So, there were some questions in our community regarding um, the policy and how we treat people and um, how our shelter is used and on uh, our park. And I was hoping you could um, address that more formally for our community. Um, and I know we discussed it. Could you just present that real quick about what people should expect?
And I believe you're referring to the temporary sheltering that we allowed at Glen Park?
Correct.
Sure, I can um, try to provide a synopsis. So uh, in the past, the city has provided. Um, temporary sheltering um, at the Hoffman Park Shelter. Where, in times of extreme cold. Um, we've done that primarily in the past because we were concerned about the nighttime temperatures. Oftentimes, um, we're aware of populations in the community that have difficulty finding a warm place and that. Uh, those conditions and under normal non-COVID, um, non-COVID conditions. Uh, the library and City Hall have been a place where people can, can get some warmth during the day. Um, and that's left somewhat of a deficit at night. Um, in this case, we did not have City Hall um, open to regular walk-in traffic, nor was the library open for walk-in traffic. So there was concern about the. Forecast of eight, eight or nine days of consecutive uh, temperatures below zero at night. Um, with the combination of no daytime, you know, opportunity for people to kind of get warm to start with. Um, staff had already utilized the Hoffman Park Shelter for some COVID testing through the month of April, so we didn't have that available. Uh, we did discuss with the clergy, um, and the clergy group and our neighbor's place about. Um, would there be another opportunity and the city made available the Glen Park Shelter um, for that? We don't have a formal policy as a city regarding the use of the shelters as a temporary warming. Uh. It was an administrative decision made by um, city staff and supported by the mayor. Um, the last time we did the Hoffman Park Shelter. We kind of continued that, uh, given the forecast here. As you all know, you didn't pass a resolution giving us permission to do that, but you certainly give us wide latitude as staff to try to use the resource we have. Um, when we can. So, made that available. Um, we knew we were gonna have that shelter available for a number of nights because of the forecast and we did so. Um, we had initially set a, a date, I believe it was the Monday, um, so maybe, I think it was maybe seven days in or something. Um, that at nine o'clock, we'd be kind of ending that service. Uh, the forecast that evening was for continued temperatures, so we did extend um, our planned time. Um, all the while, uh, we had, our neighbor's place and others had reached out to provide connections for services and so. Um, all those guests that we had at the temporary shelter were offered opportunities to uh. Um, to connect with other services that would provide them kind of continued opportunities for sheltering and, and other resources. We understand that um, a number of those folks did take advantage of those services kind of uh, immediately when they were offered. Um, and subsequently were aware that um, there, there may be some, others have taken um, the opportunity to do that since that time. So. It was intended to be a temporary shelter in the cold weather. Um, we didn't have any policies established for how it was operated or open. It was essentially kind of on the honor. It was a 24 hours, 24/7 access. Um, and we've since returned that um, that building back to the normal park hours. So that the park shelters are open. Park hours. So I believe that means 5A to 11P right now. Um, and we just ended the use of kind of the 24/7 walk-in access. And we did have that shelter then subsequently was used for another single night. Um, at the discretion of the Police Department, they did open it for um, at least one guest, maybe two guests. Um, to use that for one night after we kind of closed the 24/7. So. Our intent all along was to try to use uh, the resource we have to provide some compassionate service to the, to the public as best we could. Um, in the absence of any formal policies, we kind of um, opened it up for the period of time where the temperatures were consistently below. where the temperatures were consistently below zero each night. And then we did provide notification to those folks that were staying there that we would be closing that portion of the services, that kind of that unlimited 24/7 access. We gave them several days' notice and contact information and frankly offered rides and other things to try to facilitate them connecting with folks that do this on a regular basis and are frankly a little bit more able to use resources for folks. So I don't know, did that give you a good synopsis of what you're looking for? Anything I left out that you're looking to get answered?
So thank you for providing clarity first, and just one follow-up question. All those people who were there, they were all given proper assistance through our neighbor's place, our nonprofit program with that deals with transitional housing in River Falls, correct?
Yeah, I can't speak if they were all given services. They were all offered services. So certainly, our intent was to make sure that they had the connection. I don't believe anybody was refused services. But we can't compel people to take advantage of the services that are offered. So whether, again, I think our understanding was that our neighbor's place had had appointments with a couple of folks right away, and that it may have taken a few days in for others to decide that they wanted to do that. But you know, our neighbor's place has an intake process, so you do need to sit down and have a meeting with them in order for them to kind of go through what services they can provide. And people certainly are not compelled to do that. So they're compelled to kind of make their own way if they'd like to do that. So I'm aware that through the leadership of Assistant City Minister Stroud, you know, who kind of coordinated and implemented the logistics and worked with our partners that everybody was connected with and had ample opportunity and ample notice of kind of how we were going to operate and when we were going to close down.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gagne.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to really thank city staff. You know, I've seen you guys go well above and beyond your call in charge of being city staff and really just have great compassion for the folks in the community and taking these types of opportunities and opening up our shelters and our police department going above and beyond and finding people shelters and trying to get them hotel rooms. And you know, I think we have some really great resources in our community. I think that's been reiterated here tonight. Our neighbor's place, you go right to their Facebook page, you can donate. So I think that's one of the biggest hurdles that a lot of these places have is funding. If there's people in the community that really want to get involved, go to their pages, click up, smash that donate button. You know, my family donated $100. I don't say that because of me. I say that because there's a need in the community. I heard a lot of people on the community page talking about that need. I'd love to see a lot of other people do that. $10, $5, whatever it is, it all makes a huge difference in providing these services to the folks that need it in our communities, whether that's shelter, food, to the pantry. There's just a lot of different, to the local churches, you can specifically donate different things to these different organizations. So I think I saw a lot of people comment about the need and the wants in our community. There's a great opportunity of reaching out to these entities and saying, what do you need? How can I help? There's a lot of volunteer opportunities in a lot of these programs and shelters and that kind of thing. So reach out to them, find out what they need.
Anybody else have anything for Scott? Or Scott, if you have anything for us?
Yeah, I mean, I'll mention, I think it's getting widely known, but the library did open for some limited walk-in hours with some capacity restrictions. I'm not aware that we've met the capacity yet, so I don't think they were, I don't think they were waiting in queue yet today, although it's certainly possible. That's a welcome service that people were looking for. Certainly, we're going to continue to play cautious and proceed maybe slower than people would like us to on some of those services, but we're glad to get that kind of started. And then on March 1st, on Monday, we expect to start to transition back into Phase Two of the crushing COVID plan, which will mean five-day-a-week walk-in hours, walk-in service at City Hall. And we'll have some modifications to the capacity limits based on the county's guidance for some of our shelter rentals and other things. I will mention, excuse me, to the council, we are planning a somewhat normal summer recreation programming schedule. When I say somewhat normal, I mean as far as numbers, capacities, sizes of classes and things, maybe modified, but the offerings should look similar as far as depth and breadth of what we'll be offering. We do believe, based on our discussions with Public Health, that our aquatics program will look a lot more like a traditional aquatics program, although we will control potentially some capacities on our most busy days. But open swim looks like it will be occurring this year. Swimming lessons, as we did last year, but maybe with a little bit larger capacities in the classes so that we can accommodate more swimming lessons. So that's a hopeful sign for us as we kind of move into our contingency planning, or our regular planning, I should say, for summer rec, I think, looks a little bit more like it did in 2019. And certainly, we do that with some pretty significant improvements in our facilities since what we had in 2019. So the splash pad and the pool and Glen Park Shelter certainly are big differences from what happened. What we had in 2019, also Hoffman Park is going to be different in 2021 because of the Jug Handle Project, people getting used to new entrance exit, you know, procedures there. But certainly, we would expect, you know, sand volleyball and baseball and other things that are going on at that park to look a little bit more traditional, based on whatever guidance we can receive from the Public Health on that. So that's kind of a hint of what's coming. State budget was introduced by the governor. Your legislative priorities that you passed tonight fit, you know, within that, the scope of the governor's budget. We'll now work, start to work with the legislators on how, what things they think will survive the process and how our requests will fit with that. So police station should be, the transition should be taking place two weeks from yesterday, so March 8th, we're looking to kind of make the change over there. We are looking to make a transition with the lobby service, so to speak. So it looks at this time, although it's preliminary, that we're going to kind of leave the old police station lobby, or vestibule is probably a better way to explain it, kind of available with a phone in there where you can contact the dispatch center in case people kind of are looking for that under duress or they're, you know, that's where they're planning to go. You know, we'll kind of leave that open here, at least through the colder spring months and that, and then probably by the summer, then we can do a little bit more advertising about how things are going. It's possible that we leave a call box, so to speak, or something downtown. We haven't made any of those plans yet, and I don't want to make any commitments or promises that we will. But in the short term, you know, the employees and the equipment of the Police Department will be moving March 8th, but we'll still have some connectivity for the community in that existing location until we have kind of a good transition plan for that. And then we aren't planning to open the new lobby of the police station on March 8th. That'll remain closed to walk-in traffic. So you'll likely have to have an appointment to go into the new police station, and some of those appointments aren't made by the people going to the Police Department. So those appointments will be being made by officers on your behalf. So we'll be releasing a video in the coming weeks that kind of gives the public an idea of what their investment looks like out there, and we're excited about that project. It's turned out very well. I'd be happy to take any other questions. Mr. Plunkett, I think the mayor, the mayor's pointing at you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A while back, we had discussed some of the wastewater monitoring stuff that was being done through the municipal utilities in regards to COVID. We've seen, in fact, we've seen a fairly significant decrease in detected cases and reported cases over the last month. At both University and Pearson-St. Troy College. But it looks to me like that wastewater number is showing some fairly high viral loads. Has that proved to be useful at all, or I haven't heard much from you on that or Jason on that lately?
Yeah, I think the advice we had is that it was more than novel, so it wasn't just kind of a fun thing for scientists to look at it. There was some benefit to kind of tracking that data, but that probably in the first number of months, that wasn't going to be that helpful to kind of track things. But, and I think we're still probably in that phase where, I admit, we're not using that data as kind of a decision-making point for things. I think it was interesting to watch some of the first, very first few months, it looked like it was tracking pretty darned close to what the community testing numbers were looking like. I can say just anecdotally that our testing demand at the Hoffman Park testing site is down a fair amount, you know, from week to week. So I don't know what role testing is playing in this, too, if people are getting less tested because there's less incidents, or they're getting tested less because there's changes to the quarantine isolation rules that may be making testing less frequent or more frequent. So I just admittedly, I don't think right now that wastewater data is being used locally. And what you're referring to is, if you go out to Wisconsin Department Health Services, they are, I think, they are charting that on their site now. And it's called Wisconsin Wastewater Surveillance. So there is a number of wastewater treatment plants in Wisconsin that are sending in samples to UW Madison, and they're tracking the prevalence of COVID in the raw wastewater. So that's, that's a, you can't really cheat that test. You know, everything's coming to the wastewater plant, and then they can track it over time.
Guess that was my question. We saw a pretty significant spike in that, starting in the early part of February here, that doesn't match up with reported cases, and still a very significant elevated level. The last data point they had was on the 10th, two weeks ago. Just trying to put that information into the matrix as it impacts our decision-making for other things, you know, for what we're going to be doing here.
And we don't have the micro level. I mean, there are some early stories about how, you know, they could watch it in the wastewater, and then they could go find out which residence hall or something is having, you know, asymptomatic cases. But we're not doing any testing kind of out at manholes or things in the community. So, you know, we don't, I'll have to get back to you, Councilmember Plunkett, but I think that that's a question that will be good to raise with. We're having biweekly meetings with Public Health at these points, so on Thursday, I'm sure Assistant City Minister Stroud can ask, what should we do with that information, if anything? Or are they still kind of just collecting it to see how things go right now? Thanks for the question.
Does anybody else have anything for Scott? Okay, thanks, Scott. So we'll move on to the Comptroller's Report with Ms. Odine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Comptroller's Report for January 2021. General fund revenues through the end of January were $696,943.49 and include the January property tax settlement and state street aid. Expenditures for the same period were $665,149.82 for net revenues over expenditures of $31,793.67.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odine. Okay, next we'll move on to unfinished business. Ordinance 2021-02, creating Chapter 17.117, breweries, brew pubs, wineries, and distilleries was tabled. I'll take a motion to take it off the table if it's wanted. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Odine.
Thank you.
You tabled it. You can take it off.
I did. I'll pull it off. You can take it off. Mr. Mayor, I move to take ordinance number 2021-02 off the table for discussion.
Second. Christie, we have first and a second to take it off the table.
A first by Ms. Odine, a second by Morissette. We'll start the voting with Ms. Odine.
Aye.
Donnie.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Bierstedt.
Aye.
Plunkett. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Christie. Amy, did you want to talk a little bit? And then if we, and then we can discuss your questions.
Sure, I can provide a brief update and hopefully address some of the comments that Mr. Johnson had earlier.
Thank you.
I talked with both him and Councilmember Morissette regarding some of the changes that were made to the ordinance. I understand that this ordinance isn't a typical ordinance, right? So typically, we would have strong parameters of how these are regulated. But again, this is from a land use perspective. It is not from a licensure perspective. We're not regulating the licensing of these establishments. So what I can tell you is that there is a state definition for brew pubs, which sets it at about 10,000 gallons. There is not a state definition for a brewery, for a micro brewery, a nano brewery. So you can go online and Google some of those definitions, and you will find some blogs by distilleries themselves, by folks in the business, and they range all over the board. So I've found that a brewery is less than 6 million barrels. A micro could be 15,000 barrels. It could be 3,000 barrels. A nano, one said no definition, another said 1,000 barrels. So you kind of get the idea that there are no specifics, especially from state law. So we'd kind of be pinning these down out of thin air. What I can tell you also is that I've talked to the establishments in the city. Rush River currently produces about 2,500 barrels annually. Swinging Bridge is at about 800 barrels annually, and the Garage Bikes and Brews is just about 70 barrels annually. So all of them are categorized, well, Rush River and the Garage are categorized as, in the micro or nano category, based on this ordinance. You'll see that we did add in some language in the definitions that I did find was consistent across the board. So a brewery, the added language, large batches that are typically produced at least once a day, and from the micro and nano perspective, produced every other day or less. So again, going back to Rush River, 2,500 barrels annually, they're producing maybe every third day a week. So I don't think we're going to run into issues with these categories that we have here. And I understand that Ms. these, these categories that we have here. Um, and I, I understand that Mr. Johnson was still concerned. I will tell you again that this ordinance was set up to allow these establishments to continue. I believe that the size of their establishment is going to be what limits the number of barrels that they can produce. And we've got the record here this evening in this conversation to, um, look back on in the future if we need to. Again, you know, if there's a need in the future to, to make some changes, we can always go back to this ordinance. So I hope that helps.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Odean. You had your hand up.
Oh, oh, thank you. Yes, I'm Amy. So, um, if I can, um, rephrase what you just, well, uh, reframe just what you said. Um, the definitions or lack thereof, the, the labels that we give these, um, uh, businesses for the purposes of the zoning ordinance really have no relevance to anything other than the zoning ordinance. Would you agree with that?
That is correct.
Right. So it doesn't have anything to do with licensing or what the state requires. It's just our labels for the purpose of where you can be in the city.
Yes, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Plunkett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the only part that I really have a question of is the every other day or less language instead of using, um, a barrel count. I, I'm not sure, but I think, for example, uh, Swinging Bridge is, you know, even though they're very small batches, they've got like a barrel and a half fermenter, uh, is doing it almost every day to get to that 800 barrels a day or multiple times a day even, um, or 800 barrels a year that they're, that they're producing from that figure you gave. Um, so I, I wonder about the every other day or less and wonder if we can replace that with either nothing, just leaving it as an undefined small batch. And as you say, that they'll be limited by the reality of their physical location or some barrel size that is large enough to allow for, uh, the current business operations and any foreseeable expansion that they could have at their site in the districts that they're located. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond, Mayor, or would you?
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
Um, the, the thing that I can tell you, of course, council can make the, the changes that they see fit. However, I have talked to all three establishments. I sent them this ordinance. They have reviewed it to my knowledge and did not have any issues as proposed.
Thanks, Amy. Um, I, I can't remember who had their hands up next. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Odean, you're the first one.
No, thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, would, would point out that actually speaking of, um, the ordinance and speaking of batches, it's large batches are typically produced, um, at least once a day. And I don't think anything that's produced at, um, Swinging Bridge or the Garage, and I don't know about, um, would be considered large.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mallory, you had your hand up.
Yeah. In the ordinance, um, you'll notice that wineries are listed, but it doesn't have as many applications to the ordinance and the zoning. But I suspect in the future you'll see micro wineries where they have a much smaller production, um, that might actually, a future council might want to amend to adopt into those zones. So I just wanted to point that out. I don't think it's necessary to do it today, though. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? So Christie, we have first and a second on this. Oh, wait, Mr. Plunkett, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, after the nano-micro brewery to strike the typically every other day or less portion and just leave it as the small batches. Um, I think that that might be advantageous for our, our local operations. And I think that it, it won't hinder anything that we're doing and will allow, um, further freedom of operations for those businesses. And as far as distilling, a lot of distilling is done on, on continuous columns still. So I'm not sure on the every other day or less there, but I'll, I'll leave that as is for now. Just motion to strike typically every other day or less at the end of the nano-micro brew.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't believe I have a motion to, um, pass the ordinance yet. Just, we need to take it off the table.
Yeah, we, we did, we did take it off the table.
I will move to, uh, I move, um, that we approve our ordinance number 2021 02, um, creating chapter 17.117 on breweries, brew pubs, wineries and distilleries.
I'll second.
Okay. So get first and second ahead. Ms. Plunkett, you want to make an amendment?
Yeah, I amend, strike the typically every other day or less, uh, language at the nano-micro brewery.
Okay. So I have an amendment?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I point a clarification?
Yep.
Am I allowed to ask Amy how that, how she feels that would affect the, um, what we're looking at tonight?
Sure.
All right, Amy, how do you feel about that amendment?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I, I think there's a point of order here. I think before we can have any discussion, we should either have a second or it should die.
You're right. You're right. Sorry. That's my problem. That's my fault. Well, does anybody want a second, Mr. Plunkett's amendment? Okay, so there's no second to amendment. Okay, that amendment dies. Was there any other discussion on the original, um, resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a comment since, since Ms. Peterson mentioned I talked with her. I, you know, Mr. Plunkett, I struggled with this too. I, I wanted fine parameters, how many gallons, how many barrels, how many, you know, how much, put a number around it. And as, as Ms. Peterson pointed out, there's just too many, there's too many things out there. It's, you can't nail it down. And for us to come up with something out of whole cloth, I don't think is appropriate. I, I'm supportive of the resolution. Again, this is a land use resolution. Uh, it's not really, you know, it's not governing any kind of liquor license or anything like that. That's handled by somebody else. But I think at some point down the road, we will see this again. And hopefully by that time, some organization or group or the state will come up with, here's the definitions for these barrels down the road. But for now, I think this is, this, this puts a stake in the ground. It, 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 number one, it communicates to our current, uh, breweries or, or people who are manufacturing, but it also communicates to the people in the future who might want to do this. So I think this is a good first step. Am I happy with it in its current form? No, but I understand why we're where we're at. And I, you know, I think the staff has done a good job of, of trying to, I think they too would love to have some parameters around it. So you just go to the chart and say, you're this because of the barrels you produce, but it's just not there today. So, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm in favor of the resolution as it is. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, are you able to take, uh, this is John. Are you able to take a comment from Mr. Johnson?
Sure, if he has something. Yeah.
Yeah, he's good. So he's in.
Yep, go ahead, Matt.
Um, we're both in agreement with it. My only concern is that we are, and I get that this isn't part of licensure, but we are a brewery and on the grid on that table A, we technically aren't listed in the B1 as a brewery. So if you looked at the legal definition of what we are, it's not, we're not listed as a yes on there. Does that make sense? That's concerning, that's concerning to me. And I understand this is all in good faith and it can be adjusted, but it just worries me a little bit.
Amy, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I, I.
Just so we know for the record who is speaking.
Sure, Stephanie Johnson.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I really can state that based on this ordinance, by definition, the Garage Bikes and Brews is a nano slash micro brewery, and they are allowed in B1.
That's my understanding too, Mr. Mayor. Yep. So Matt and Stephanie, is that okay with you guys?
Yes, as long as that's in the minutes, that sounds good.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Christie, we have first and a second on the, uh, ordinance 2021 dash, uh, 02, creating a chapter 17.117 for breweries, brew pubs, wineries and distilleries.
First by Ms. Odean, a second by Donnie. We'll start the vote with Mr. Gagne. Plunkett.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Donnie. Odean.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, uh, I just have one appointment I'd like to make. I'd like to appoint, um, Heidi Hansen through December of 2023 to the bid board.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of your appointment.
Second.
Christie, we got first and a second on my appointment to the bid board.
First by Gagne, a second by Donnie. We'll start the vote with Mr. Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Biersted.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Kanye.
Aye.
Donnie.
Aye.
Odean.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second to adjourn.
Start with Mr. Biersted.
Aye.
Donnie. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odean.
Aye.
Kanye.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Morissette. Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate everything. Everybody, take care.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.